Okay, welcome this afternoon. It is June 17th, 4:30 PM. We'll begin the council meeting like we have since Greg taken over. We'll stand for a moment of silence and then we'll start with a Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call please.
Brad Hand?
Here.
Tom Bruceer?
Here.
Keith Hamel?
Here.
Tom Eggers? Wayne Barahona?
Here.
Say Todd, can you see if Tom is on?
Yeah, Tom is not on.
Okay. Okay, then we'll move on. Approval of the agenda.
So move. Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Bruceer?
Aye.
Hamel?
Aye.
Barahona?
Aye.
Ken?
Aye. Okay, at this time, we have a public comment for items that are on and off the agenda. We have a set of rules that are on the agendas that list the outline of the procedure of the public comments. We limit the comments to about four minutes, so if there's any public comment, we'll take those now. And if so, you can step to the podium. And if I ask you to state your name and your address?
Chad Schnorr, 1900 South Fifth Avenue.
Okay.
Spot item 5B. Mayor and City Council. My name is Chad, and I'm writing to you today to inquire about a shed located on South Fifth. By the time Labor Day is here, I promise to remove all materials, including nails, lumber, and remaining contents of the building, as well as disposing of them at my own cost. However, I would not be able to remove the concrete, or I do not have any of the equipment that is necessary to do so. I'm willing to offer $100, as well as my labor, to tear down the building. And I would have the parts started above destruction, destructed by Labor Day, as promised. Thank you for your consideration and time, and please let me know if there is any additional inquiries, suggestions, or my proposal.
Okay. Thank you. We'll take that under advisement when we get down to item 5B. So, any other public comments?
Brad, just want to let you know I'm online.
Okay, Tom.
It's Tom.
Thank you, Tom.
Sorry I'm late. Sorry I'm late.
Brad, I have all phone listeners unmuted, so...
Okay. And if there's any others that are on the phone or online that have public comment, entertain those now. Okay, I hear none. We'll move on to the consent agenda.
I've got a question on the EMS rates. Maybe you can answer that for me, Sam. Just curious, I see that they're updated based on information from Wellmark. I guess I was just looking for a little bit of background as to how that plays into our equation.
Well, Kevin and I have adopted a philosophy of updating the rates as often as we get the new rates from Wellmark. And when we received the new rates in April that were updated for fiscal year 1920, and they were updated, I think because of COVID, we realized they hadn't been updated in several years. So I said, I encourage Kevin, you know, let's bring this forward now. And then right after we brought it forward, a new memo came out from Wellmark for the new rates for this coming fiscal year. So, bottom line is, we'll have updated the rates twice in two months, but prior to that, we hadn't updated them in several years.
And I guess that was kind of the crux of my question or comment is, is that how the other towns are doing it? Are they tying their rates to the Wellmark payout rate? Or are they going above? Because it seems like we're the cheapest in the area, and I'm just trying to figure out where those numbers have come from, other than the fact that we haven't updated them in several years.
The answer, Wayne, and whether we could go higher than the adopted rate, I believe the answer is yes, we would have to check into that. However, going to the minimum Wellmark rate, where we know we can get reimbursement for, is important. But the second part of that question, I would have to get back to you on.
Okay.
Any further questions?
I'd make motion that we accept the consent that Jan has presented.
Second.
Further discussion? I'll entertain a roll call, please.
Hamel?
Aye.
Eggers?
Aye.
Barahona?
Aye.
Ken?
Aye.
Bruceer?
Aye.
Okay, number 5A, under Old Business, zoning ordinance amendment. This will be the third reading of the zoning of western 115 feet of 401 South Second Avenue, formerly the Sunset Motel, from artillery commercial to residential multiple, and the remainder from commercial residential to mobile home district contingent on rezoning the existing mobile home park to MH for our Kirwin and Kathy Sterling. Any other comments on that, Sam?
Yes, sir. This item should be continued to the July 1 meeting, and the reason is, is that the Planning Commission recommended approval of this item contingent on 4G on this agenda, which is set for hearing on July 1. So, on July 1, you can have the hearing on the rezone of their existing trailer park, and you can have first reading and waive second and third, if you want, at that meeting, and then approve third reading of this at the same time. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I certainly don't want to draw this out any longer.
No.
So, yeah, I guess I would be okay with making a motion to continue this to the July 1 meeting, where we can take care of it all at the same time.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? I hear none, so I'll entertain a roll call, please.
Ken?
Aye.
Hamel?
Aye.
Eggers?
Aye.
Barahona?
Aye.
Bruceer?
Aye.
Okay, under 5B, review of bids of corn crib salvage demolish, demolition on South Fifth Avenue. Back to you again, Sam.
All right, so... What's up here?
And we received no bids or anything on that?
We did not receive any bids, and we did receive the letter today, which... I recommend that we accept it. And to summarize it for Tom, I don't know if he heard the, heard it earlier. Tom, were you able to hear the offer earlier?
I was not, sorry.
Okay, so Chad Schnorr, who I've had, been having some comment, conversations with since the bids didn't, we didn't receive any bids at all. So I had, I had done a post on Facebook and sent out a message, you know, doing a last call, encouraging people to contact me if they were interested. And so Chad and I have had several conversations. He's offering to pay us $100 and contribute his labor to tear down the corn crib, have everything removed except for the concrete by Labor Day. And I think that's a good deal, and I think we should take it.
I don't know, we got so many other offers.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion.
I don't think I could.
Oh, go ahead, Tom.
No, that's fine. Go ahead and make the motion.
I'll make a motion to accept Chad's offer.
Support.
Okay, we have any other discussion?
If I, if I might?
Yes.
Sir Chairman, Mike, sorry to spring this on you, but regarding the, regarding the liability for this, you know, in the, the initial proposal, there was to be a certificate of, of coverage. I don't know if we need to get into that with this, or if we draw up something for Chad to sign that indemnifies the city of liability if he gets hurt out there, something like that.
I think what I would recommend, and Chad will certainly let you weigh in on this when we would have it prepared, but basically, you would take down the corn crib, you'd understand that you're doing at your own risk if you'd get hurt. It's on you. You get to keep all the lumber, et cetera. And so we, something simple that just spells that out. Is that all right?
That's perfectly fine.
Yeah, and we'll let you take a look and weigh in on that, and we'll get going on that, so when you're ready to start, you've got that in place. Okay?
And that's not something we would need to come back to the council for approval on. That's something I could sign.
I would agree, that would be okay.
Yep. Okay, further discussion? I entertain a roll call, please.
Hamel?
Aye.
Eggers?
Aye.
Bruceer?
Aye.
Barahona?
Aye.
Ken?
Aye. Okay, 5B, community fireworks display on Sunday, September 6. Does Kurt have more information on that, or you, Sam?
Could start with Kurt, see if he has anything.
Okay, Kurt, do you have anything?
Oh, excuse me. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Just fine. Okay, great. Okay, so this should be a continuation from the conversation, I think, that we had at our last council meeting a couple weeks ago. We did receive the contract from Premier Pyrotechnics in the amount of $7,500. We have reviewed the contract as staff. Michael was also involved in that review. We feel comfortable with it. It does give us an out if we are having to cancel the display due to COVID-19, which would probably also impact both, well, Operation Day, I won't speak for RISE, but if one or either one of those are canceled, it doesn't give us an out if it's a COVID-19 related issue. So anyways, the contract's in front of us. Agreement would be to split it 50/50 with the SDDC, and there will be a minimum commitment from both the City of Sheldon and SDDC of $1,000, so there will be skin in the game from both entities. And there will also be solicitation of business contributions to help subsidize the display.
So Kurt, this is Tom.
Yeah.
What was, what is our, what is our penalty for, if we do need to cancel?
Due to COVID?
Yeah.
If we, if it's due to COVID, there is no penalty, we will be fully refunded.
Okay, very good, thank you.
If it's, if it's due to something else, we would be out the deposit, or we could find an alternative date to do it, so if it's a weather-related issue, for example. Very good, thank you. Yeah.
So are we looking for a motion to prove?
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
I'll support. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Eggers?
Aye.
Hamel?
Aye.
Bruceer?
Aye.
Barahona?
Aye.
Ken?
Aye. Okay. Number six, new business. First item is a lease of property on Pine Street to James and Gail Clark. At this point, we have to open a public hearing, correct?
It opened up the lines to.
Yep. If you want to open up the phone lines, Todd, for the public hearing, and we'll begin the public hearing. If there's any comments at this time, please step to the podium and state your name, address, and your concerns.
Yeah, everybody is unmuted.
Okay. Okay, if I, we need to, no comments?
If I could make my comments within the public hearing, I think that would be appropriate. So, so to give a little bit of background on this, for the purpose of the public hearing, the city had obtained this property many years ago for potential access to the property of the north. One of the adjacent landowners in the past had approached Todd Yule and myself, an accounts member, regarding wanting to buy the property. And Todd and I believe that it's important for the city to retain this property for potential future access to north. I know we haven't needed it for, for 30 years, but that this is, but this is important access to the north for both utilities and potential access for, for north, North 10th Avenue to extend to the north. I drafted with Mike's assistance a lease for the landowner to consider that had been doing most of the property maintenance. As a courtesy, I showed the copy of the lease to the neighbor on the other side, the Vandrees, and I've had good conversations with both Derwin Vandrie and Jim Clark. And there is some disagreement from the Vandrees on leasing out the entire piece of property to the Clarks. So they would prefer to be able to retain the ability to access the property on the north side of the, of their home, and that is a reasonable request. It's not something they can just drive on now without city permission, but it is city right-of-way, and so they could seek city permission to drive on the property. The way the lease is currently constructed, it gives, it gives control to the Clarks for the entire piece of property for a three-year term. They can't build anything on it. It's not a recorded lease, and it's not transferable. They could put a shed, as long as it's, as it's not on a poured foundation. They could run dogs on it, and they could control access. So, it appears that the, the solution is to either, there are several ways to look, to look at this. We could move forward with the lease as it is, knowing that we have an adjacent landowner that's opposed to it. I thought we'd get a letter from him, but I haven't. But I feel compelled to tell you that he is, that Derwin Vandrie is opposed to the lease. We could split it and do two leases. If you do that, you would need to probably remove the, the ability in the lease to have buildings at all, because then you'd have to figure out where the whole setbacks are, and you don't have a true lot there. So, you could run into the potential of having, you know, two sheds right next to each other, and then you have to basically draw an imaginary lot line, and that, that becomes a bit confusing. Or what you could say, say, you know what? The city should probably be maintaining this anyway. We appreciate the land, the adjacent landowners for the maintenance that they've done over the years. So, city, we'll start maintaining it. Now, Todd already does, and his team already does a lot of mowing, but I need to present that to you as a, as an option. I think this discussion has brought some important issues to a head, and so I think that it is a good discussion to have, so...
Okay.
Question for Sam.
Go ahead.
Sam, so I was catching most of what you were talking about, so, but I'm not clear about with what I see on the lease, is there any, is there any ability for the other landowner to get access to the back?
Michael, feel free to jump in, but my understanding, Tom, is not unless the leasing, which would be the Clarks, gives permission.
I'm sorry, I can't hardly hear you, I'm sorry.
The short answer to that is no, not, not unless the Clarks give the Vandrees permission.
So with the conversations that you had, and if that's not an agreeable situation on the lease, are we, are we looking at a, an issue coming up when, when he wants to get to the back, and he's going to just go ahead and drive across it anyway?
Potentially, which is one of the reasons why I think, I think the best solution is to split, is to split the lease. And it shouldn't be a whole lot of more legal work to split the lease. We've already got the current lease. Remove the ability to put sheds, so we don't have to deal with that issue, and bring, bring back two simple leases at another public hearing, and move forward.
So a question for Todd is, what, how difficult is it for the city to maintain that lot?
The answer to that would be is if we had to maintain it, we would put it in our regular mowing route. It would not get mowed as often as the current landowners are mowing it, but it would get mowed every couple of weeks. It would only add, it would add less than a half hour to the route, I would guess.
Reason I ask that is, it seems to be the reason for this whole thing is based upon maintenance of that lot, and a difference of opinion between the two adjacent properties and how that should be done. I'm wondering if in the end, we stay away from a lease altogether, and we maintain it as a city according to our, according to our criteria, and just be done with it.
We would then not allow them to use the property for any purpose, correct?
I would say that's been our position up to this point, correct?
Other than I believe there's a garden on the property as we speak.
Okay.
Clarks, I see you're here. You want to weigh in on this?
What we got to do? State my name?
Yeah, but you say your name and address, and...
Jim Clark, 1001 Pine Street. I have no issue mowing it. I like, I like having my garden there. It's just an area for the dogs to run. I take care of it, because if that property looks good, then mine looks good. And I'm all about keeping my properties looking as good as I can.
Yep.
And that's, that's the whole issue there. I, my issue as far as splitting the lease, I have concerns on the way they take care of their property, the weeds, the grass, and that would be my only concern.
If the lease were split, how would that affect, like, say where your garden is?
It wouldn't.
It would not?
No.
It just would be more green area that's not maintained like you would maintain it?
Correct.
Okay. I guess that's...
Jim, this is Councilman, this is Councilman Tom.
Yes.
Would you be agreeable if the city were to maintain it as I proposed?
That's totally up to the city, but I have no issue with it either.
Thank you.
Well, yeah, it's like Todd said, I mow a little more often than that, so...
That's why I want to make sure you're agreeable with, with what Todd stated.
Yes and no.
Yes and no. You know, I'm on the fence both ways.
I, I guess in my opinion, I don't know that there's any reason why we need to commit more city dollars to doing something that both homeowners, landowners have committed to doing, and that is maintaining that property. So I would propose a lease that would cut it in half, and each side maintaining their own. I think, yeah, there's going to be valid points both ways with your meticulous maintenance and then the maybe less, a period of less than desirable maintenance on the other side, but at the same time, it's, I can understand their, their need for wanting a right-of-way to get into the back there. So, to me, splitting it seems an amicable way to do it. Would you have a problem with that, Jim?
Yes and no. You know, like I said, it's just the, the maintenance, the weeds. I've got the weeds pretty much gone. I don't have weeds in my yard. It's just about appearance for me.
Sure.
And, you know, it's a decent neighborhood. The weeds, tall grass, makes it look tacky.
Mm-hmm.
You know, you will drive by their property now, you got weeds three feet tall, 12 inches tall. The driveway, every crack's full of weeds. It's, it's just personal appearance for me.
And Todd, if, correct me if I'm wrong, the city would not be doing any sort of maintenance to the property other than just mowing? Is that correct?
No, that would be incorrect. I mean, we, we spray the parks and the cemetery, and I guess we don't typically spray right-of-ways, but if there was noxious weeds in there, we would, probably not to the level that somebody sprays their yard. I mean, I have my yard sprayed, like, sprayed and fertilized four times a year. I don't know what the Clarks do, but I would guess something similar. I'm certainly not going to do that to a piece of right-of-way.
Sure.
Good. Anything else?
Nope.
Nope? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Yep, come on.
I'm Jennifer Anderson, I'm at 250 North 10th Avenue, so I live across the street from this. So I really don't have any skin in the game, other than the way it appears today. Jim and Gaila keep it wonderful looking. I, it's, that property is where I have to look out my window every day. And my fear is, if we move it to splitting it, knowing how they take care of the other property, it's not going to look well. It's going to look, make our neighborhood look way worse than it, than it should. And then, of course, if the city can only do, mow it every couple of weeks, again, that's the same issue. You know, we do like to keep our neighborhood near clean, have everything cut, looking nice. So I do have concern if we would split that and they not take care of that property, because they don't take care of theirs today.
Thank you. Thank you.
If it was split, Sam, how would you draw up that property? Because you said we probably wouldn't do sheds because of the property line. How would we do that, and who's maintaining what area, what section?
Well, there's a, there's a, there's a maintenance clause in the lease now, and Mike and I could shore that up a bit, but basically, if one of the parties chooses not to maintain the property, I could send them a, a notice of termination, and then they could appeal that notice to you.
Okay, I'm going to clean up my question. How would you decide the boundary of that property?
The crack in the concrete, right?
Right.
Yeah, the crack in the concrete, so...
My worry is that if we split it, we're going to have a Hatfield and McCoy situation, where Sam's taking too many phone calls complaining from one side or the other.
Sean, I think we're already there.
That's why I would either be in favor of going the way we are, or the city takes it. I, I think we've spent enough time on this situation that... Here's my concern. We brought in Sam 18 months ago to help better this city, and we've got him doing small piddly stuff like leases, looking at lawns, or chickens. I got bigger and better plans for Sam to move this city along, and I don't think he needs to waste any more time on this lease.
Jim?
Sean, I didn't quite hear what your second option was.
Either we give it to Clarks today as drawn up, because we, we got the paperwork here, it's ready to go, or we let the city maintain it.
And you have no preference between those two?
If I had a preference, it would be to run the lease to Clark, because it's only a half hour mowing here and there, but somebody's got to drive a mower over there, get out, mow. And I've driven by the property, it does look decent, so...
Jim, I'm looking at a picture of it now. How far towards Vandrees are you maintaining? I see there's like a tree line there. Are you going right up to that tree line?
Yes.
Okay. So that's, that's currently as far as you're taking it now, so that's, the tree line would, would signify the end of the property, of the Vandrie property. And I guess the concern that I heard from the Vandrie side was losing the ability to drive a vehicle back there. Is that correct, Sam? Is that the argument that you had heard? Is that the argument that you had heard?
Well, in my conversation with Derwin, I had raised the issue of the condition of his mother's home.
Mm-hmm.
And I was very honest about it. And he said, "Well, I need the ability to get to the rear of the property to, for example, maintain the lot or put on a new roof." So there are a couple of ways to address it. He can either, under the current lease as it's written, and if it's approved, he could, he'd have to go to Jim and Gaila and ask for permission. Or we can split the lease, or we can add a clause to the lease which gives the Public Works Director or me the, the ability to allow him to access the property with our permission. What we don't want to do is what we know has happened previously, where there had been some driving that had happened on the, on the lot, which had created deep ruts, and that, that created an issue. Now, I understand that, I was told by Derwin that that had only happened once, but I saw the once, if that's what it was, and it was pretty deep ruts. So, anyway. So my, my thought would be is, see, solicit more public comment. If there's no more public comment, close the hearing. And then I have a, I have a few thoughts on moving forward.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, with that, we'll go, any more comments during the public hearing?
Jim, if you want to come to the podium. I know I've done that in the past, and my neighbor's done that in the past. When they did their landscaping last year, they walked over and said, "Can we use your driveway for a few days?" I said, "No problem." What would be your response if the Van Dries did come over to ask permission to...
Not one issue at all.
Yeah, I mean, if they come over and said, "We're going to shingle in the back"?
I would have no issue.
Okay.
Yep, thank you. Any other comments? Not, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Sub moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I mean, excuse me, wrong meeting, wrong meeting. Yeah, wrong meeting, that was a landfill meeting. Roll call, please.
Brewster.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye.
Farahona.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Okay, now on to the resolution of approving the lease and the direction that we want to go. Sam, you have some more?
I think I've laid out the options and I'll stand by for questions.
Okay. Desire of the council.
I'll make a motion that we lease the property to Jim and Gaila Clark.
I have a motion.
Mike, are you going to answer?
I'll second it.
My point for the council's consideration is just to note that although this is set up on a three-year basis, two things to keep in mind. If this would extend beyond three years, you would have to come back to the council and have a public hearing at that time unless the law changes. But notwithstanding that three-year period, this lease specifically states that either party can terminate for any reason upon 90 days' notice to the other. So quite frankly, if things don't work out, and we're talking about this in September, October, you have the power to scuttle the whole thing. So you're not tying up this piece of property for an extremely long period of time.
That's good to know.
Okay. So we had a motion by Sean, and we had a second by Tom, correct?
I might, Mr. Chairman. So I know Pete and I have talked about this, and another council member has mentioned it to me too regarding, this current lease does allow sheds or gazebos or that sort of thing with a zoning permit to be placed as long as there's not cement poured. So just wanted, just wanted to make sure that you're okay with that because that, that is included in the lease. And if you want that amended out, now is the time to amend it out.
I assume that that came up as a suggestion that the, my, that was a desire to happen?
Yeah, so it was a, yeah, Jim and I talked about it, and I, I was okay with it as long as there, there wasn't concrete poured and going on top of an easement.
Okay. I guess I have an issue if somebody would turn down that road for some foreseen reason and end up at the bottom, hit the shed. Is it the city's liability or is it the homeowners?
It's addressed in the lease under Section 11.4, that those type of causes of action would have to be indemnified by the tenant as to the landlord. So that is covered.
Okay. Because hypothetically, it could happen.
But noting that we have a 90-day out on that, what would happen if there was a structure there? It would just be, they'd have 90 days to remove it?
The lease contemplates that when it's over, the tenant's property has to be removed.
I might, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
So, and I think, I think, I think it's safe to assume, but I should ask Jim if he disagrees with this, but I, you know, when he comes, if he comes forward with a request for a shed or a gazebo, I would ask for it to be put far enough back so that that issue wouldn't be an issue. And also, it doesn't happen very often, but every once in a while, there is snow pushed there. So the ability to have a, a pile of, of snow there, it would, would be necessary also. But that doesn't need to be written in as long as the shed is far enough back. Jim, does that create...
Sam, you could just address that as an accessory building, and it can't be any closer to the road than the existing home structure.
Did you catch that, Sam?
Can you say that one more time?
You would just address it as an accessory building, and the building would have to be located further away from the road, which is Pine Street, than the existing home.
Oh, there you go.
Accessory buildings are only allowed in the rear yard.
Yeah. Answer.
I was just going to say, I have a shed, I, I don't intend on putting it there.
Okay.
Okay.
But Jim has indicated that he's not putting a shed, so.
Okay. Okay. Any other discussions amongst the council? Okay, roll call, please.
Kent.
No.
Brewster.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Farahona.
Aye.
Okay, we're moving on to 6B, resolution approving a 2080 agreement to host the state Fire Marshal's training trailer. You want to move that to July 1?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That item will be moved to the July 1 meeting. I think we're working on the 2080 yet. Okay.
Is it appropriate to ask anything about this?
Yes. It is a very good deal for Sheldon.
That was my question, why?
Because this is a trailer that the state has throughout the state of Iowa, that has all the training materials in for firefighter one and firefighter two class. And we have access for it to use it, Sheldon, since we're hosting it anytime we want.
Oh, okay.
It's got hose, it's got nozzles, it's got hydrants, that you dummy'd hydrants, you have positive pressure fans, you have axes, helican bars, all kinds of tools.
I also assume it's going to be some work for the Sheldon Fire Department.
Yes, when it goes out, not necessarily for us, whoever the host class is, has to keep inventory of it. I'll make sure that everything's accounted for when it comes back and forth. So, yes, take inventory before and after it comes back.
Okay. I don't have to do...
So what would be the duration of this agreement then?
Sam, do you, I think it's until they decide not to have the trailers anymore, correct?
Until either party gives a 60 or 90-day notice, I think it is.
Okay.
Is this going to be in lieu of a training facility?
No, this is for the states to run the state training bureau. In order for them to host firefighter one and two certification classes, they will bring those, to those classes and use that material. Because the state was going to towns to do tests, and towns didn't have the equipment that they wanted. So the state threw the whole revamp of the whole Fire Marshal's service, they came up with trailers throughout the state of Iowa. And we got the northern, thinks the six or eight counties in northwest Iowa to serve.
Okay.
So. Okay, that's July 1. Reports, under 7, 1, our opening City Hall plan. Sam, you have more comments on that?
Is Jared on the line?
Jared, he was. Are you there, Jared?
Yep, this is, yep, this is Jared, I'm on.
Okay.
If we could just start with him.
Okay, go ahead, Jared, and if you have some comments, go ahead.
Hello, everyone, this is Jared Johnson with the O'Brien County Emergency Management. Just a few updates on my end. Our cases are going up. Right now, on the coronavirus that I would, I got website, our positive COVID cases are at 68 as a total, number of recovered is 28. We unfortunately have had one death due to COVID. And at this point in time, the PDF that, that shows hospitalizations does show a zero, but I do want everyone to know that if an individual gets transferred out, they not show on there that there's hospitalized within O'Brien County, even though that there are O'Brien County residents that are actually hospitalized in areas such as Sioux Falls or Sioux City. So there's, there's been some kind of confusion over that. Just want people to know that there, even if they see that there's a zero there, there is still a chance that people are hospitalized due to COVID. So we are, with the increase in cases in our area, we're still promoting the usage of masks in public spaces where it's hard to do social distancing, signage up, depending what the coronavirus symptoms are and that to, to not enter public facilities if you have any of the symptoms. And if you do put up signs, it's recommended to put up both English and Spanish signs. And we're, we're watching things closely. Unfortunately, in our area, our, our trending line is going up, and it's going up quite quickly, and it's also going up in our neighboring counties. And we think a lot of that is due to increased traveling. And so we're, we're watching things, we're watching things closely because we, we hope that it doesn't get back to an area that is a high-risk population area such as a long-term care facility. So, yeah, if there's anything you guys can, can help promote, prevention, it'd be greatly appreciated. And that's, those are the updates I have for you at this point.
Okay, thank you, Jared. Sam?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank Jared for all of his help and leadership during this, this time. I really appreciated his assistance, and I have called him many times, and he's always picked up for me. So I'm going to thank him for that. One of the things about our plan compared to the courthouse is that we're, we're laid out differently. Because of where our police department is and where our elevators are and our steps are, it isn't very practical when we unlock the front doors to pace footsteps on the floor and say one way in, one, one way out. So the proposal in front of you, which is a one, one, or basically half of a page on when and how to open City Hall, basically says reopening as of June 25 and opening wide up. Now, we are opening, we are open now by appointment, and we have been since this all started. But I just, we, we really aren't in a position to offer people masks. We are in a position to offer our employees masks, and we do have, have them available if they choose to wear them. And we are also cleaning, as we had been before. Village, Village Northwest has been cleaning Tuesdays and Thursdays as they used to be, and they restarted that on May 19. So, you know, as, as the village has pointed out too, and I've had conversations with Linda and Barry, you know, the village has a vulnerable population, and we need to, to be cognizant of that. And to that end, Chanel Mattis had come in and done, done a deep clean on parts of City Hall and did an absolutely tremendous job. She also cleaned, cleaned this room, so really helped us out a lot. So that's where we're at, and I'll stand by for questions.
Okay. Discussion from the council, questions for Sam?
So are you, Sam, are you seeking a, a resolution to open or not open? Is that...
Yeah, on reopening, you know, we, we didn't, we didn't need, we didn't need a vote when we closed because that was handled by the governor. The governor has reopened to the state to our discretion, the city's discretion, and we believe that it's an important enough decision and it should have your buy-in. Angie, these are black and white copies, but Angie has what we would have on the, on the front, front door. We're also still encouraging people to use alternate met, methods to do business, either online or using the drop. And we also need people to know that when we reopen the building, we are not in a position to be able to do extra cleaning. You know, and we have people lined up, and, you know, I think if we reopen the building for people to come in, we should also be reopening the, the room rentals as well. We did install a doorbell to the left of, and we would, we could keep the clerk's office door locked, people could ring the doorbell and we could come let them in, because the clerk's office waiting area is very small. And that's a, that's a good idea, and I appreciate Angie's...
Yeah, I think the, with opening up the, the rental areas, the onus would be on the people that are throwing these events, that are hosting these events to ensure the things. So I think that's, that's a fair statement. I'm good with how you have this laid out, so I would make a motion to proceed that way.
With the opening of June, I'll entertain, I'll second that motion. Further discussion?
Got a question.
Yes.
Got a question.
Don't butcher first.
So I'm all for reopening, but what's going to, if we see that there's an increase like Jared's talking of infections? What is our criteria and what will be our action to that criteria?
I've thought about this, Tom, and I can think of two. One is if the governor issues a new set of orders, and the other is if there's sickness here in this building with our...
Second one, Sam, I'm sorry.
The second one is if there's sickness in this building with any of our employees. And that is a, and that is one of the risks.
Go ahead, Tom.
...to either of those happen.
Well, if we had a, if we had a sickness or economic development, for example, I'd say we, we would lock the front doors while we figure out what we need to do cleaning. And if we reopen to appointment only, where we have those meetings until the cleaning is done.
Yeah, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, Sam, but I just know that it would behoove us to be prepared to know what we're going to do, when, and if that should happen.
When there is a rental, do they have extra cleaning for that? Are they in, do they have to do their own cleaning? How does that work? uh, do they have extra cleaning for that? Are they in, do they have to do their own cleaning? How does that work?
Really, we are not in the position to supply the extra sanitizing product to them. We've had trouble getting it ourselves just for what we've gotta do. So if, we've notified them that they're at their own risk. And they'll have like this typical Swiffer, soap and water, um, rags, but that's about it.
So the rentee has to clean up after? Okay.
Yes.
Micah, is there any sort of, uh, legal trouble we could find yourselves in if someone were to contract this in this building?
Prove it. You and everybody else is asking that. Um, we'll know more in several months after this all works itself out. Uh, we are looking into what type of contractual language we might put in rental agreements. And how that might help. But I heard someone say.
Prove it.
There is a evidentiary question, but, um, we're still very early in the cycle of what this looks like in terms of who's responsible and, um, what damages you could be held liable for.
Could we just hold off on the rentals of the building for a month or two? Do we have to rent the building out?
You do not. You.
I would just say open the city offices and not rent the building out.
Angie and I would support that.
I'd be in favor of that as well.
And then, then we're open for business, but yet we're not open in the rental business.
Yeah, it's a way to mitigate risk. I, I would support that.
So you would be willing to change your, amend your?
I would amend my motion to, uh, opening up city hall and, uh, not continuing or not opening for rentals at this time until, uh, further discussions had.
And we'll bring that back, that part back for discussion in July. How's that sound?
That'll work.
On the rentals.
And I will, uh, continue my second on that.
Do we have any pending rentals?
Yes.
Quite a few.
Uh, beyond or before July 1?
Yes.
Graduation weekend, but it's, it's okay. I think people understand. So.
We've notified them that it was subject to this plan.
Yep.
But the building reopened June, June 25, sorry. So I don't think any of them have sent out invitations.
Right. Sure. Okay.
Okay. Any further discussion amongst the council? Sam, Micah? Okay, I'll entertain, roll call, please.
Hamel?
Aye.
Brewster?
Aye.
Barahona?
Aye.
Hamel? I'm sorry. Kent?
Aye.
Eggers?
Aye.
Okay. Managers report. Sam, you're up again. Nothing?
Oh, sir.
Okay. And you have anything?
No.
Okay. Todd?
I'm good.
Scott? Nope. Okay. Anything?
I think Kurt's on.
Kurt?
No, I'm good as well. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, any of the council, Wayne?
Nope.
Micah?
No, thank you.
Sean?
Uh, with Scott being here, I'll mention his letter he had today. The backpack program is still taking donations or whatnot. So contact Scott if you have any questions.
Okay.
I'll, motion to adjourn.
Okay. I'll support that. And roll call. Aye.
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 Barahona?
Aye.
Meetings adjourned.
See you, Brad.
Thank you all.